Good evening and thank you for being here tonight. It's a great crowd and we appreciate you, appreciate you being here. Councilman Hookleby will open with a prayer.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day grateful, Father, for all of your many blessings to us, Lord. I thank you for the great city of Nacogdoches, Lord, and for the council and all of our staff. I ask that you be in our midst tonight as we make decisions that would be honoring to you and as we honor those that have come before us, Lord. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'll call the meeting to order if you'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on the agenda is open forum and I'm assuming, since I have nothing, that we have no one signed up for open forum. So we will move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. If you'll review the items under number five and let me know if there's anything, counsel, that you would like to remove.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, speaking probably saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to six, regular agenda. City council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, receive an update on the NAC Together Master Planning Project, Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services and Community Service Director. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Great.
All right. That's it. All right, thank you. So, again, Elena Hilton, City Planner. There we go, all right. So this presentation is meant to be just a broad overview of what we've done in the last three months in regards to the NAC Together project. So we're going to talk about where we were in December and where we're at now. So we brought a summary of some of our activities to the council on December 6th and a number of those items were summaries of the committee activities, including meetings, different discussion topics that they've done, different outreach activities that they've had. We also included overall engagement steps in our outreach efforts and then we provided just an overview of the next steps in project timeline. Since then, DTJ has been compiling, compiling all that public feedback and working on those draft policies. And so they're doing a lot of report writing right now and we've seen some of those come out and we'll go over that in just a minute. But right now, the committees are essentially in the process of reviewing and discussing those drafts that we received from DTJ. All right, so some of the other activities that we've done since we last spoke about this project in December. So we had a housing focus group. We also had a focus group that centered on arts, culture, and recreation. We also hosted a meet and greet at the Fronia Brewery where we had DTJ come in and have them just have some beers with the community and answer questions. We just wrapped up a Housing and Economic Development Survey that closed on February 22nd, so we'll be seeing that feedback incorporated into the plan soon. And we've been doing a lot of SFA campus outreach. So these are the things that the committees have worked on or seen since the update that we gave you in December. So the Comprehensive Plan Committee, they have reviewed the guiding principles and draft goals of the comprehensive plan. We actually had some feedback that we sent back to DTJ and they made revisions and so the second round is under review. We've also received a draft of the housing study, which has also been reviewed and discussed with City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission through a joint workshop and they're currently working on revisions to that document. They've also reviewed the future, the draft future land use classifications. And we received the first essential complete draft, quote unquote, complete draft of the comprehensive plan and that's under review right now as well. So those documents are a little bit longer, so they take more time. And so we'll be meeting, discuss those soon. The Downtown Master Plan Committee, they've also reviewed the guiding principles and goals. They've reviewed their own downtown initiatives specific to the downtown master plan and provided feedback to the consultant. And they've also reviewed and provided feedback on the implementation strategies for the downtown master plan. And they just wrapped a review last week of the downtown master plan draft. So you have the different elements of the plan and they tie all those together. So the comprehensive plan draft includes future land use classifications. It includes the guiding principles and goals, but we pulled those documents out separately so they could be reviewed independently and then they'll all be brought back together in one comprehensive plan. And so where are we now? What's next? So deliverables, again, we've seen so far is the Downtown Comprehensive Plan Existing Conditions Report, the Downtown Design Sketches or preliminary sketches, those are also under revisions, the Draft Engagement Report, which will be updating to include the focus groups and surveys that we've conducted since December, as well as the Vision and Guiding Principles for the Downtown and Comprehensive Plan, the Draft Housing Study, which is also under revisions to incorporate the feedback that we received from City Council and P&amp;Z back in January, and also the Downtown Master Plan Draft and Comprehensive Plan Draft. And so what are the next steps? We're going to continue to review and refine those drafts that we've seen so far. Those drafts are just what they are, they're drafts. And so they are subject to the feedback and input from the committees and council and the general public at large. We're also anticipating the submission of the draft future I-69 corridor study. So we're expecting that later this month, if not early April. And we're also looking for draft policies and implementation strategies. So we've been talking about guiding principles and some recommendations and now we're going to start getting into some of those implementation strategies. We also still have the public review and comment portion of this plan. So once we get it through the committees and they've signed off on it and blessed it, then we'll put that out at large for the general public to provide comments and feedback on. And then after that, we'll present those to City Council for final approval. You'll notice on here that the dates for the public review and comment are around April and May. And then for the completion date, we've moved it from April, May to May, June. So some of these materials have taken a little bit longer to review than others, some of the draft plans and reports. So we pushed it so we could make sure that we incorporated all the public feedback in these plans. And we had good plans that reflected the values and feedback of the community. So we're not going to rush anything. We're going to make sure that all these drafts have been thoroughly reviewed by not just the committees, but the public at large before we bring those forward for final approval. And so that's just a brief overview and summary of what we've done since we talked to you guys in December. And we're going to be doing the same presentation with the Planning and Zoning Commission next week on Monday at the regular meeting at 5:00 o'clock. So I know I went over that quickly, so if anyone has any questions, we can go back over some of the slides and get into some of the details if you like. Brian Bray is also in attendance and he's helping tag team this presentation today and he can answer questions specific to the downtown plan if you guys want to get into the weeds about that.
Okay. I think I'd like to open it up to the public first. Is there any, any comment or questions that the public has concerning the plans? Okay. Counsel, any, any questions or comments? Councilmember Hookleby?
I just noticed that there are a few differences between the slideshow that's, that's published on, on the council's website and what you've presented. Can we just make sure that those get updated?
Yes. So really, the main change is the bottom two bullet points where you have the review and comment. We realized that was kind of old information. We wanted to make sure we updated that for the council meeting, but yes, we'll get those updated.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Yeah, that's the only thing I see.
I have a couple of questions. The I-69 study, corridor study, can you fill me in on that? Who is doing it? Where is it? What's happening with it?
So DTJ Design, they're the consultant that we've hired to do all of those plans together. So they're the ones who are drafting the future I-69 corridor study. We're anticipating to receive a draft of that later this month. So we hope to get a first draft in March, present it to the committees, and then we'll go from there as far as, you know, the feedback and how long it takes to get revisions.
So we, we have never gotten anything on this right yet or just some, just a little blurb, I think, at one point?
Yeah, well, they've been gathering feedback in regards to the I-69 corridor plan, but now that they have that, they're working on the drafts. They're actually doing the writing of the reports.
I'm also wondering about the future land use map. To me, that's a real critical part of this report and we haven't seen any draft of that or...
Yeah, so last month, the Comp Plan Committee reviewed some of the draft future land use classifications and the consultant wanted to make sure we got some good direction on the actual land use definitions before they applied those to the map. So we're anticipating with the next revision of that draft, it will be accompanied by the actual future land use map.
Okay. I think there was, there were several questions surrounding single family being suburban. How they'll take that into consideration or I'm not sure how that will relate to the future land use map.
Yes, so we posed that question or we captured that question in the comments and forwarded that to the consultant. So we're anticipating a response and maybe provide some examples of what that term means to give the committee better guidance on how to move forward with those. So we've asked DTJ to give us some examples of what that means, suburban, and a clear definition, and then we'll submit that to the committee once we receive that feedback.
So, okay, well, I'll wait to see their proposed future land use map. Also, are the drafts available on the website, the drafts of these plans?
Not yet, because we want to get those vetted through the committees first before we release them for public comment. So, no, no ma'am, they haven't been released at this time. But we have released our kind of initial public engagement draft report and a lot of the raw survey responses online so people can kind of get a sneak peek at what that public engagement feedback has looked like.
That's all my questions, but I also appreciate the very short, concise presentation. So thank you.
Well, I want to leave plenty of room for questions and discussion and...
I think it's very helpful and I want to thank the city manager also for his influence in keeping short presentations. Thank you.
He's short. Mr. Bowden?
No.
Anything else you think? Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you, Elena.
Okay, we'll now move to 6B, receive a report from the Capital Needs Advisory Committee. Ms. McDonald?
I'm Judy McDonald and I am the chairman of this committee that you all put together, which I am so pleased that you did. But I'm also asking that our, we've kind of elevated it to co-chairman if John would join me. John Callahan has been extremely helpful, you know. It's good to have two people taking on the chore, not just one. And first, we want to compliment you all. It's very unusual to have a group, an elected body, appoint a committee like you have done and given us all of these varied people. And I would like to ask if there's anybody here that's currently serving on the committee, if you would stand. Thank you. I know they know who you are. You all appointed some really good folks, such a varied group as well, and the wisdom of that.
I don't think Roy should... Oh, Roy didn't, yeah, Roy raised your hand.
Yeah, Roy should have stood. He has been an excellent member. Thank y'all for appointing him to help guide us. That was, that was really good. But I would like to now ask John to go over the agenda with you that we have had the advisory committee's meeting schedule and also to remind you that so far, we have met 22 hours and that's just together. That does not count the hours that so many of us have done pestering Steve and staff to help us fill in and get ready, et cetera, for the meetings that we did hold.
So as Judy mentioned, we've had 22 hours' worth of meetings. We just finished meeting number six out of a scheduled 15-meeting sequence that we're in. Really appreciative of the city staff. They've kind of shown us all the works and the blemishes and Steve has kind of been our shepherd, getting us where we needed to go on time and speaking to the right people. Just to kind of give you a quick synopsis, we have so far to date discussed capital financing and bond regulations, how that financing process works. We're going to have a subsequent discussion on that. Pam was very helpful with that as well. Streets and drainage, we've discussed streets and drainage when out to Public Works, spent an entire meeting going over that. Recreation Center in the library, the animal shelter, the airport, the city hall facilities, the sewage treatment plant, and that's, those are the key parts. I don't think I've left anything off of that to date. We've been, initially, it was kind of a show and tell process as we were going out and looking at things and we kind of reformatted the way that the committee meets and we've been able to steal back some more time to have a little bit more open and frank discussions. So I don't want to steal the rest of Judy's thunder, but we're going to be able to present you all what you've charged us with. But additionally, we're probably also going to have an addenda of some additional recommendations that the city might consider moving forward to, to help make Nacogdoches a better place.
Well, you can tell this is a dog and pony show that we put on together, so the staff has done a great job. We cannot say enough about their presentations. They have been open to our questions and believe me, we've had plenty. And some of them, they've had to repeat because we may not remember from the previous meeting. Attendance has been excellent. The people that you appointed are totally committed to this committee and to the work that you have challenged us with. Their patience in answering our questions has just been phenomenal. Okay, in July, we intend to come back with and present to you, as John has said, our prioritized recommendations and also make suggestions for funding, taxpayer, and debt considerations. I want to thank you. This was a rare opportunity for all of us to serve. Don't think it's done many places. And the diversified public input that you're receiving from this is going to really, I think, help the future of Nacogdoches because I know how capable all of you are. We're doing our best and we will return for another update, May the 2nd. And again, we will bring you a total recommendation on July the 11th. And thank you all for your service in particular and mostly for asking us to do this job. We're proud to do it.
Thank you. We appreciate your work. Certainly, are there any questions from the community on, on the progress of the, of the committee so far? I know under our leadership, they are doing a great job and we have a lot of confidence that that price tag is going to be very affordable when we, when we get it. Anybody, any, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I snuck in and saw a few minutes of y'all's meeting today. One of the questions that I asked Mr. Bray while I was there and asked Ms. Rhonda Lewis is, are we recording those meetings and are they being posted for public consumption? Because I know the amount of time you're spending. It would be really helpful for others to be able to go and, and see some of the, the discussions you're having because they are so important. And as we get a recommendation, people will be able to see the work that you've done. And I personally can't thank you all enough for the work that you're doing because I know, I know y'all must be giving Steve Bartlett a hard, hard time, day in and day out. And then my other question is related to a specific area of projects because I know I've had a number of my constituents ask me, what are the discussions centered around sidewalks and how are those happening in your, in your committee?
I think you have, you probably heard just a little bit of that today and sidewalks are definitely being considered. There's a lot of discussion on how we place those into our recommendations, but I know that you will be hearing more about, along with water and sewer and libraries and recreation centers, but you're going to be hearing a lot about first, the, the basic things that we've looked at so far. We hadn't even been to the fire stations yet. We have other places that, you know, that we're, the parks, we've not been there yet. So to give you a report on where that is would be very premature, but you must know that one of the people that you all did assign, Maggie, has kept sidewalks at the very top of our list. Thank you.
Yes. Any, yes.
I know all of us here so appreciate your hard work and I cannot tell you how grateful I am for all, everybody who is on this committee, including our staff who's working on it. It really is a great thing and we're obligated to you. I just, my little tiny question is, you are going to recommend both general obligation funds, bonds, and revenue bonds, I assume?
It's too early to, to make that commitment because we have not gotten to the final listening to your financial advisors and we have a whole two-hour session with them. Once we know that, then we are going to meet two other times and combine what we think are what we're going to call tier one, the staff has been very good about tier one, tier two, tier three.
Yes, ma'am. I think to your specific question, there's, all the funding options are on the table right now for the committee and we, we're going to look at, you know, how might we pay for all of this? What's the tax burden going to be on the taxpayer? All those options that would factor into that recommendation.
We're taking into consideration water and all the things that would normally come. That's just, I'm so interested in the whole picture, so I just want to be sure we're...
And, and we are looking definitely at the whole picture. It's been such a real help that staff has been extremely good at bringing us the total necessities and then we've gone out and looked at those. We haven't just sat and been fed and that's been a real interesting experience. If you hadn't been to the sewer plant, you need to go.
And to Councilmember Hookleby, to your specific question, the first several meetings, I think the first meeting may have been recorded. That was when the investment folks were speaking with us. The, the next ones were primarily touring, so it's hard to get that going. Today was the first meeting where we just met and the capability was there, but I don't know if it all, it's above my technical level, but I'm pretty sure that it was recorded. So when we have the ability, obviously, we will.
We will continue to do so. But obviously, we've been told by staff, yes, they did that. Any other questions?
Mr. Bowden, do you have anything?
No, I was just, just going, the staff has been really responsive to the needs and basically the questions, but the expertise in the committee is, I mean, it's, citywide, it's great and it brings out things that I didn't even know, that the expertise in the committee is great.
Our councilman, he has done an excellent job of being with us. He hadn't said a lot, he's just listened a lot and, and let us do the talking and the listening too, so thank y'all.
That's his job. Thank, thank you so much, what you're doing. Okay, we will move on to item C, Consider Approval of a Resolution of Commendation and Appreciation to the Honorable Judy B. McDonald. I got kind of tongue tied, I'm sorry. So if you'll come forward, I'm going to ask Councilman Hookleby to stand with you and I would like to read a proclamation. Okay, so keep it.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, this is, this is, it is lengthy because your career is lengthy, so anyway. This is Resolution Number 1331-03-23. A resolution of commendation and appreciation to the Honorable Judy B. McDonald for the generous contribution of her time and talent to the city of Nacogdoches for many years, appointing Judy B. McDonald Mayor Emeritus. Whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald came to Nacogdoches in 1964 with her husband, the late Archie P. McDonald. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald and her husband raised their two children, Christopher Lee McDonald and the late Tucker Barrett McDonald, in Nacogdoches. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald began her involvement in public service in the Nacogdoches Parent Teachers Association, serving as a member and president for multiple campus groups. Whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald was convinced to run for Nacogdoches City Commission in 1977, where she would go on to serve for 10 years. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald received a baccalaureate degree from Stephen F. Austin State University in 1979. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald served in various leadership capacities for the Nacogdoches United Way, including president, vice president, and chair. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald ran for and won the at-large seat on the Nacogdoches City Commission in 1987 and was elected by commission as mayor and chair each term until her retirement in 1995. Whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald served as Vice President of the Deep East Texas Council of Governments. And whereas, Judy B. McDonald served as Region 16 President of the Texas Municipal League. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald served as President of the Texas Association of General Aviation. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald was appointed by Governor Ann Richards to serve on the Department of Housing and Community Affairs Board and on the Governor's Commission for Women. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald served professionally as the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation in two stints from June of 1997 to March of 2008 and returning from May 13, May of 2013 to July of 2014. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald came out of retirement again as the interim executive director of the Nacogdoches Convention and Visitors Bureau from May to September 2015. And whereas, the Nacogdoches City Council named the City Public Library the Judy B. McDonald Nacogdoches Public Library in 2012. Whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald served on numerous state and local boards, including the Texas Economic Development Council, Interstate 69 Coalition Steering Committee, Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, Texas Natural Resources Conservation Commission Advisory Committee, Nacogdoches County Coalition, American Red Cross, Nacogdoches Chapter, Samaritan Center Board, Nacogdoches Humane Society, Crime Stoppers Board, Nacogdoches County Rodeo Association, American Association of University Women, Business and Professional Women, Nacogdoches Treatment Center Board, Nacogdoches Habitat for Humanity Board, TXU State Advisory Board, Texas Economic Development Council Board, and Texas Forest Country Partnership, among others. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald has received countless honors and awards, including life membership to Texas PTA for service to schools, Woman of the Year Award by the Local American Association of University Women, Texas Woman of Watch by the Texas Business Professional Women, election to the Nacogdoches Women's Hall of Fame, Nacogdoches Citizen of the Year by the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce, Stephen F. Austin State University Distinguished Alumni, the Texas Forest Country Partnership Silver Bucket Award, the Ralph W. Steen Award by the Deep East Texas Council of Governments, among many others. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald, a lifelong public servant determined to improve her city and the lives of its residents, agreed in December of 2022 to serve on and chair the Capital Needs Advisory Committee. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald has served tirelessly for decades with grace and dignity while empowering others to serve their community through her leadership example. Whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald has mentored generations of leaders in Nacogdoches, including numerous current and past members of the city commission and city council as, whereas, as other public servants. And whereas, the Honorable Judy B. McDonald, by and through her dedicated public service, has contributed greatly to making the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, a finer and better place to live for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, both personally and collectively, on behalf of the city administration, all employees of the city, and residents of the city, does hereby express a deep appreciation and admiration to the Honorable Judy B. McDonald for the many contributions made by her resulting in benefits to the city of Nacogdoches. Be it further resolved that the city council, as a result of the duration and depth of public service rendered to the city of Nacogdoches and the community as a whole by the Honorable Judy B. McDonald, does hereby bestow upon her the honorary title of Mayor Emeritus. And be it further resolved that the city administration is hereby directed to forward a framed, duly attested copy of this resolution to the Honorable Judy B. McDonald and hang a framed, duly attested copy of this resolution in the Judy B. McDonald Nacogdoches Public Library. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from the date of its passage. And with that, I would ask for a motion for its passage.
Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion, counsel?
Yes, yes, I would like to say just a couple of things. Every word in that is true and we are so grateful for your service to our city and I count you as one of my absolute best friends and mentors and I'm so grateful for you.
Y'all are too kind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, those are, those are perfectly close, saying aye. Those opposed, aye.
You shame me with your kindness. And before we go any further, thank you all. This is more than I have, I mean, my words, you put my name on a building that's huge and I'm so grateful for that. But I could not be here, I could not have done one of those things without my family. And, you know, poor old Archie, he married a 1950's Donna Reed, he thought. And instead, he ended up with Judy McDonald. And I could not have done any of that without him and the support of my family and particularly my sons. And one of them, Chris, is here. Chris, I'm asking you please stand, along with my only granddaughter. And if you saw me way well ago, it was at my great-grandson. Would you all please stand? Kelly and... My son-in-law, my grandson-in-law, Tyler, and the two, that's, that little one is Heath and the little girl is Addie and those are my great-grandsons. and the little girl is Addie, and those are my great-grandchildren. But Kelly, Kelly, stand back up. Back, when I sat up there, Jimmy, the room, the chair was over here and I have two pictures of her when I was mayor, sitting on the table with that really curly hair, which she straightens now, but the delight of my life and the delight of our lives has been our children, as you know. And also, I would like to recognize my poor daughter-in-law. Can you imagine moving to Nacogdoches and, Chris didn't marry for a long time, it was 50, and coming to Nacogdoches and having to be Judy McDonald's daughter-in-law? And I do ask Kim Cooper McDonald to stand. Kim, she is... Now, I also have in the audience Archie's family and so they know more than any of it. And I did not know they were coming, but my, first of all, I will ask John Tucker, who is Archie's half-brother, and his family to stand, his wife Donna, and they brought somebody that I feel like is just like mine and that is their son, Caleb, standing there beside him. And then there is my sister-in-law, who lives here that most of you all know by now, and that's Sherri Tucker, my best friend. And Sherri, would you stand along? And now George can't stand, but you can see him sitting there in the chair. And he is Archie's half-brother. If I let anybody out. There's, now, I do have my pastor here who keeps me on the right track and he, he gave me some of the best advice that I pass along to you. I had not been mayor more than a few months and Kyle hadn't been my pastor much longer and he, I was coming down the aisle and he said, Judy, you just remember this mayor in business? It's not who you are, it's what you do. And so many of us have seen people who have been elected to office and who lose it or that becomes who they are, or even people who have jobs and they leave and they, they feel like that they are no longer worthy. But that was some of the best advice I've gotten. And Kyle and Jane, his wife Jane, are certainly my... And there's one other person back there that's sort of our surrogate pastor and that's Lorraine Brown. She's at the First Methodist Church, but we keep trying to get her over to Austin Heights. Lorraine, I don't know who else is here, but I, those are the ones I saw when I came in. Thank y'all. You've all done such a good job for me and this one is like, you know, you talked about, I had a son, Tucker, who passed away. Chad bought and sold me when he walked in the door and guess what his son's name is? His son's name is Tucker and he took his first steps in my house. So that's why you all have had to put up with this, this resolution and him, I know he instigated some of this. But it is with great humbleness, and I mean that with all my heart, that you have honored me with this and you do, you shame me with your kindness.
Mayor, I would be remiss if I did not mention that Councilmember Fisher regrets that she could not be here tonight and she was also in agreement with the gratitude that the council feels toward you. And I, I was supposed to make sure that that was said and that she sends her love also.
Chad certainly led the charge, but it took no convincing on, on his part of the rest of us. We were all, just had, wish we had thought of the idea, had it come up with the idea.
Jimmy, you're awful close. You're, you're...
Thank, thank you so much. Okay, we will move to number seven and we will adjourn to executive session for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section 551.087. We'll do that at 6:04. We are returning from executive session and pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087, we will reconvene at 6:31 and we, we have no action. This meeting's adjourned.